All right. It is now 5:30. So we'll get started, but I'd like to welcome you to the May, Fannin County Board of Education meeting. This may be the closest we've had to filling the facility for these meetings, so it's exciting to see all of the students and the young folks with us tonight, and I'm looking forward to some wonderful recognitions. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Superintendent Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Junior Horton, the youth pastor of the Casel Church of God, forward for the invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance given by Assistant Principal David Henson, who served in the U.S. Army, and also has served our country year in Desert Storm. Mr. Horton, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here. And I just want to say thank you to this board and everybody for looking after our most precious commodity for our future, and that's our children and our people. Thank you. Bless your worship.
Amen.
Dear most heavenly Father, how precious is your name, how good is your name, how great are you, the only one true God. Lord, we praise you for this day. We praise you for all the many blessings you bestow upon us daily. God, and I pray your special blessings upon this meeting tonight, Lord. I thank you for every student, every board member, every teacher represented here, Lord, and I pray your blessings will be upon them. Lord, I pray your Holy Spirit will just come in this place and enter this room, Lord, and lead and guide in every part of this meeting today, Lord, that people have open minds and open hearts and make godly decisions concerning our schools. Lord, and we'll praise you and we'll give you honor for it, but there's nothing greater than you here on this earth, Lord. Thank you again, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
This time, we'll salute your flag. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I have a five, uh, speaking floor on the agendas to approve the consent agenda, so Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve the consent agenda after you have a moment to review. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a recommendation as presented.
We have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I hear a motion?
So, move.
And a second.
Same.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. I have number five special recognitions is truly a blessing, and as we look out this afternoon at all the wonderful young faces, it is a reminder of how blessed we are in living in Fannin County. The first special recognition I'd like to call your attention to is the Bailey County Middle School, Florida Science and Engineering Fair of World Winners, and with that, I'm going to invite Principal Mark Young forward.
Grad school, we're going to go Tuesday, so I'd like to invite Mrs. Tori Hart, the Southfield Godwin's, and Miss Ava Ursch. Miss Melissa Maslado, if you have a sneak panel mention. Please ask her first.
I'll go around and get it.
These young ladies scored in the top 10% of the junior division for their region at the science fair, which is something they're not accustomed to at the middle school. We have a science fair at school, and they turned their a lot of outstanding enterprises with their spiritual spirit out there, and they took it and repeated and did very well. So I'd like to recognize this Tori Hart and this Southfield Godwin, that are advisors and support toward teachers and have worked with these children to make sure that they had all the guidance that they need. Also, I'd like to take, just to say that to recognize somebody else who was instrumental in this, and that's Dr. Jill Leine. So if you just raise your hand, I know she don't. Well, she is, she's worked a lot of efforts in our county for steering, we really appreciate her, she's a great asset to the middle school, also in our middle school SGT, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. You both stand there for just a minute, we're going to come around and have our picture made. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Can I first, like? Thank you, Mr. Young. Our next group of students will possibly grow up with me by Angela, advisor, and they're from East Fannin, at Fannin County Middle School. They're from the stock market game, and they're actually congressional district winners, and so I'm going to have Mr. Young to talk about his students and introduce them first, and then we're going to invite Principal Matt Price forward to talk about East Fannin. Mr. Young?
So, so this is the grade that came to me early in the year, and so we like to do the stock market game with our class, and so we had teams in class, and these guys ended up in the end or something. Today, they got to spend an exciting time at Fox Theater and go down and eat, and invited for lunch as a celebration of that victory. So we have this, this girl in the grade, she's a advisor, they passed, and they saved that, and we are missing, and she has one fellow this night, so we make sure we get a good picture.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
She has one hand down over the side, we'll get a picture.
Principal Price, thank you for being here.
Our guys have come down from East Fannin, with Miss Renee Carter, she's our advisor. Now, we've been at the middle school one in the fall, and so then we won in the spring, and so next year we'll fight about to see if we can get a fall player. So these guys had an exciting day today. Like I said, we have Miss Renee Carter, we have Johnny Hartman, eight majors, Bella Davenport, and, and I'm sorry, I'm just talking to him back there. And so congratulations, guys, we're proud of you guys, and if y'all do it at the middle school and go on the team next year, then I'll root for you, but not, not personally.
And Ford, if we can go around and have our picture made with these financial wizards? Yes.
I'm waiting on the end line, is that?
Hey, you should go up there tonight, she's right.
You take turns. The big house in there, actually.
Let's see. Let me just look at, like, there you go. I think one more, somebody close your eyes, I'm going to take a good ear.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Chair, it's okay, we just had the additional science fair later for the middle school, and Rob, can Mr. Young recognize this place?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
This is Melissa Maslado, we bring her here. This is Ava's partner in the science fair.
Yes, that's David. Yeah, let's get a picture.
Yeah, there you go. Now, back row, that's because of the way. All right, Bobby, you got it.
Thank you. Thank you. This next group of students is from the Bailey County High School, and they are, they are participants in the career and technical student organizations, and they all placed at either the national or state levels. And the career and technical student organizations are a component of CTAE, which is near and dear to all of our hearts, so it's an honor to welcome Assistant Principal Henson forward to recognize these students.
Thank you, Mr. Miller and the board, for giving me this opportunity to share the accomplishments of so many amazing students with our career technical student organizations. So first, I want to recognize is our FCCLA, which is our family consumer career leaders of America, so I'm going to ask those ladies and their advisor, Christian Somme, to come down. This year, we had three students that competed in a digital story event, which they had to prepare and put that together, and because of that, they were able to, I wouldn't want to say low, but qualify for the nationals. That is Adeline Beavers, Emma Holloway, and Brayden Quatner. Another aspect of this program's FCCLA, they won the state red chapter award, which indicates it is one of the most improving, both in membership and in activities, and so we are very thankful for what they've been able to accomplish this year. This is our FCCLA. All right, the next group I want to invite up here is our Skills USA group. This is a group that is about our automotive, construction, and welding, so all of those students along with their advisors, that is Terry Flowers and Dan Bilbeck, they're going to come forward. Now, this is a pretty lengthy group here. You've got state placers, Emma Pittman placed third in automotive ignition and electrical. Dane Robbins placed third in automotive refinishing. We also had at the Skills Challenge, which is a state level competition, Jordan Schrader finished third in stick welding. Emline Cochran finished third in career display. Wilton Henderson, second in prepared speech. Daniel Gibson finished third in automotive surface technology. And then one of, another award that we are very excited about is a national level award. Texas State University has a program called Women of Welding, and they only selected 28 students in the entire nation, and Miss Emline Cochran was selected to participate in that this summer, so we're very excited about those. And a number, number of other places throughout the year, but this is, you know, the highlights, and so we're very excited about what Miss Flowers, Miss Bilbeck, and Coach Chad's name are doing to build that program. So this is Skills USA. The next group is the Technology Students of America, TSA, and I have all of our TSA students and their advisor, Mr. Gibbs, to come down. As they are coming down, I want to go ahead and mention that Mr. Gibbs is currently the Georgia Engineering and Technology Educators of America president, and he is leading that group, and a lot of the competitions take place with their direction. This year, the state placers, first of all, we know we've had a very successful electric car division, and we have won that a couple of times, but this year, they split into two categories, hoping that somebody else could win, but we ended up taking first in the lead acid battery, and then fifth in the advanced battery division, and those students participating were Tyler Enslin, Luke Melfree, James Kyle, and Devin Groves. In electrical application, Bryce Ware was the state champ, first place. The team as a whole, that is the entire chapter team, placed fourth, James Kyle, Sam Javely, Seth Hughes, Loby Martin, Carnation Dixon, and Connor Kyle. And then James Kyle was selected because he placed in so many different things, he was fourth overall as the outstanding TSA student in the states. And then also Bryce Ware was selected to be the Sergeant at Arms as a state officer this year, and they will be heading to Louisville this summer to compete in the nationals, so we're very excited about all that they've been doing. So this is our TSA students, let's give them a hand. The next group I want to recognize is our FFA students, so our FFA students and their advisor, which is going to come off, they'll come forward. Again, the competitions and things that they've competed in, we could go on and on with all the different placements, but these are our top level performers. This year, placing second in the state, Abby McFarland in the livestock record book. We also had state placing in veterinary science, in their division, there was Amy Thomas, Zoe Putnam, Abby McFarland, and Kelly Anwer. This year, also receiving a state degree, which is a very difficult thing to achieve, we had Blake Nicholson, Amy Thomas, Slade Epperson, Zoe Putnam, and Ryan Larson. And we also, Amy Thomas has represented us on the Area One Vice President, the state officer, and she will be rolling off, but we have just found out last night that Abby McFarland will become another state officer for this next year as our Area One Treasurer. We are also very excited about everything that they have done this year, they continue to shine, and so we're thankful for our FFA and our advisors, if we can. I know we don't have our hosts, that is represented by this gives and Mr. King, but a great honor that they, they completed and finalized and received industry certification for our health occupational students of America, so we're very excited about that. So I think, well, we're going to bring everybody back down at this point and line up so we can all get a picture of the entire CTSO, CTAE group. So come on, guys.
And Ford, we actually wanted to try Miss Finley and Mr. Harbison staging in a small area, so there you go. We'll let your kids get placed, and we'll get one.
Let's see, Louis Sharp, why don't you just come on the, yeah, come on up a little bit, that's good.
Now, that is a room full of lessons, y'all. Let's give all of our students another round of applause.
Mass activists.
Mr. Chair? It is a blessing to have Miss Vincent Hyde come up next. She is going to give us a school government team update.
Well, I've got the hardest act of all of y'all, so I'm pretty forward to every person, everyone you've just seen. So our SGT's all met this month, well, met in April, you know, we were up behind, so Luke Richmond on April 19th, and first, they had no fundraisers, no field trip, said no facility use request for once, they went into executive session to discuss personnel, then they, the school recruitment plan for 2324 was presented and approved. The SGT self-assessment will be completed by the end of April, and they will review that, probably in May or later. SGT elections and performance were discussed. They voted to use their charter funds to have a STEAM teacher position, and they discussed their main calendar. East Fannin, on March 29th, they had no, none of the field trip requests, everybody's already made all the requests, they're lining it up, that their title on carryover funds will be reviewed, and they were starting to approve the different thing, different expenditures that they discussed at the meeting, and then they discussed the SGT training that was going to happen on the 31st. West Fannin, on April 18th, they had one fundraising request was a spring use of, for spring usable, which is going to be next spring, but they're going to start selling coffee in August to try to spread some money for that, and they had no field trip request for no facility use. Ms. Dan shared school happening, Ms. Spox shared the spring assessment data, their budget and their expenditures were discussed and approved. They also discussed SGT elections and requirements to serve available slots. Their self-assessment will be emailed to them, and they need to complete it by the beginning, and members were given a copy of the code of conduct and school handbook, and she asked them to review that, and then they will, and they're maybe go over and look at if they want to make any changes or what they want to, any changes they have. And they also discussed about classroom birthday parties for next year. Then they can build student net on April 19th, that for fundraiser, they have TSA and rental rods, and field trip, and field aid events, self-insessions. The band is going to go to Fannin County High School to help recruitment, and they're going to, their facility use request for the soapbox derby, and parking lot for the, the lodge association, they're going to use their parking lot for different events in this town, and then their traveling practice. They also went into executive session to assess personnel. Mr. Young, they have a personnel for the 2324 school year. They reviewed their proposed title on carryover money, they discussed upcoming SGT elections. Members were asked to complete self-assessment before the beginning, and their parent and family engagement policy, and school parent compact was reviewed and feedback was requested, and a STEAM update was given. The high school net on April 19th, they had three fundraising requests, they had a baseball, they had an English playing football, they had sign, sell signs, and pickleball, have a pickleball tournament, they had a sponsor for the Fannin County High School. CBI level films were approved, and they had no facility use requests, and their meeting was a home meeting, and they discussed in the honor board requirements and the admittance admitted graduation this year, so we'll see all the boards of the different things that the students have earned. All the SGT, next month's meeting, you'll get the base on new members, because they're all having their elections this week, so you'll get that next month at the June meeting. Got any questions? Thank you.
Miss Hyde?
I have one question. Yes.
I'm late, this is your last meeting, isn't it?
It is. This is my very last meeting, so somebody else will be updating you on SGT in June, but thank y'all for our duty and the privilege to be in Fannin County system, but I really have to go home this time, and I'm going to flag with two remedies.
We'll be coming.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the school happenings, and I'll invite Principal Young forward to tell us what's going on at the middle school.
Why am I a clear room? Honestly, we're getting the opportunity to come in and publicly feel that our school, of other students and adults, and it's a wonderful opportunity, and I'd like to thank you for that. I don't know when it started, but it's been years since I've been principal, and I really enjoy the opportunity to tell you what's going on in Fannin Middle, and to pack it all in 10 minutes is impossible, so I will tell you, this is an overview right up front. So going back in time just a little bit, this is our REACH Scholarship program, I have them getting on last school happens at eight, it just happened, these are our five REACH stars from this year, these are folks who'll be freshmen next year, and wonderful program, and really have done outstanding this yearly students. The process that we use, we are picking the right students, and I appreciate that. We have just completed interviews, or I should say Dr. Ramsey, and his team have just completed interviews for the next set of REACH scholars to be named next year, and I know we have 14 very qualified applicants for that, or nominees for that, and we appreciate that opportunity to recognize them. Also, our Veterans Day Parade, I wanted to make a big shout out for We're the Church of Christ, they sponsored a meal, they opened their doors in fellowship hall, the ladies from the church came and vet all the veterans, it was an opportunity for me to go and speak to the veterans, a good time of fellowship. We had veterans there from probably 25 years old up to 90, just a good time before the parade took place, and we drove over to the middle school to give our students the opportunity to the opportunity to cheer for our veterans as they drove by and waved, and it was just a wonderful day. One that I really, really enjoyed. Getting up to a little more current, um, events. We had literacy arts just a while back, and we discovered that this community really likes their bingo. So, we had lots of things going on that night, but, uh, that was the most popular among the students and adults. So much so that we took the bingo set that we had bought at the turn-in and turned around and purchased one that we could use in the future. So, we did have a good turnout. Uh, we love our community events, like our Pam's and building. Our book fair is always popular. It's actually going on right now as well. This is the end of the year book fair, which is the last one yet, so if you'd like to come in tomorrow, uh, please make sure you do that and get the cinnamon with your students for that. Uh, we can say our recognition, uh, folks that we recognize up here. Well, the stock market game, that gives you an idea. There's Ms. Benton. Uh, she's unable to be with us tonight. Uh, and there's some pictures for the Georgia Science Fair in the city, uh, Georgia Science and Engineering Fair. I failed to mention when they were up here, not only that they competed around our college, but they also got to go to the University of Georgia or to the Classic Center and compete. So, we, we remained in the top ten percent, so we were qualified to go to that, uh, University of Georgia competition. And it was a great experience for the girls. And it was also a great motivator for all those students who will participate in our local science fair next year. And we hope not only to have just one team, but multiple teams to get to go and have this fun next year. So, great job for that. Especially the athletics. If you look at the very top of that slide, you'll see banners hanging in our gym. Uh, we've been collecting those as we win Mountain League championships. And although these students are not appearing tonight in, in front of you or being recognized, we hope that in a couple of years, they will be up here as we feed the high school. And, uh, we have great athletics. We have, um, these are our four basketball teams in the Mountain League, seventh and eighth grade boys and girls. Out of those four teams this past year, three of them were number one in the Mountain League, and the other one was number two. So, we are putting those championship banners up there and trying to set those programs up for the high school. Really great relationship between Coach Davis and our person and high school coaches in these programs. And we'd like to be able to feed those programs as a whole. Also, we have Tom Lipton, our baseball team. Uh, they actually got to participate in at least one round of the playoffs. And our wrestling team to the right, you see those guys? Nice turnout for wrestling. We, I've often said this about that sport. It's the one that conditions you for every other sport. Wrestling is a great sport for a lot of different reasons. But, uh, Coach Tucker, the head coach down the left, and Zach Page, his assistant, did a wonderful job with that team. And then worked with the high school and Coach Dick Pean and, and Coach Chuck Patterson, um, trying to make that program and get those guys ready so that someday they can be up here in front. Uh, also, we have soccer teams. Our girls soccer team, um, was able to go to at least one round of the playoffs. And you'll see some pictures of our golf team. They're awesome. H2K activities, very important. We know, and research shows, and if we can get kids involved with things, uh, that they'll more likely graduate. And I know from personal experience, and all children, the more involved they are in things, uh, the less likely they are to get in trouble, um, to fill the top of things that are important. And these things are certainly important. We had a yearbook club this year. Um, Lauren Payne and Katie Siegel took that on. And Lauren, of course, was, um, out here at the county office, and we're very proud of her. And Jody Moore, he stepped in and took her role, and these students are produced our yearbook this year. We're very proud of them for that. Next year, we're going to move that maybe to computer science and have some of our eighth graders do the club again. We appreciate the opportunity to do that. We have a news group that has just newly started. Our media specialist, Scott Moat, uh, came from a, a situation where he had, uh, produced news before. And next year, we're going to have an opportunity for about eight to ten students who will actually have that for a class. And again, that is supporting Mr. Gibbs' program at high school. So, we're excited to have that. And I don't know if you've seen the news from the auditorium, it's available out there online. Uh, there have been some great news gets produced in a very short amount of time. These guys have picked up and done very well. Also, we like to give a huge shout out to elementary schools. We know at least, um, two of the elementary schools, I believe, have news gas, maybe about three. But they, they bring those kids up, and we're getting those guys ready for high school. Uh, at the bottom right-hand corner, there's our academic team, always a strong showing for them. And most recently, and if you were there the other night at our band concert, you know right down this minute there, uh, talking about, it's a picture of our chorus. That is not the kids that sung the other night. That's an old picture. I couldn't get it in time. But, um, Mr. Mike Weaver and David Jones have volunteered their time after school to work with about twenty-five students, uh, to put the chorus together. And after three weeks of practice, they performed the other night just in front of the band concert, and they did a phenomenal job. And we appreciate that. This is our final arts and, um, Lurdes Mount Arts Association. These are the pieces. They're displayed in our school, but they actually hung over the Lurdes Mount Arts show, and we're proud of that. Uh, we have band competitions that we've been to. This band that you see in the right-hand corner traveled to Merrill Tennessee and got the performance, uh, a very beautiful, didn't you, an old, old style Edworth duck down by Volatorium. Uh, really took me back to be there. Seventy-three and seventy-three band at large group performance evaluation scored the highest marks of any middle, uh, any time in our past at middle school, I scored. They said they had a little more error number. They did better than your middle school band we had sent before. So, we're very proud of that. Coming off of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, failure to be able to convert level one to, Mr. Warren's really built back your band. We appreciate his efforts too. Uh, CKE pathways. These are, are pictures of, we have lots of things going on, but in the left-hand side, you'll see a young man programming a robot. Uh, and those other two pictures are growing cultures and youth occupations. Uh, we really like that program. Our students have, um, taken to that. It's taken off. And we are supporting Co-Center at the high school and their nursing program there with them. Also, uh, again, we may not see these students in front here, but in a few years, when they come to TSA, uh, we're going to see them, uh, as the TSA program goes at the high school. These guys are actually state places as well. Third place in cybersecurity, Mr. James Borrell. Third place in foundations of technology, James Borrell. Fourth place in junior solo sprint, Carter Peden and Ashton Carter. And fourth place in problem solving, Lala Strange and Solly White. Very proud of those two students. Uh, agriculture. I don't know if you had a chance to visit our plant sale. Uh, you couldn't miss it if you drove anywhere near Ace Hardware. We have that in the middle school Saturday. Uh, those are pictures from our greenhouse. Mr. Seth Davis, uh, and his students do a phenomenal job going to plants and getting those things ready for the plant sale. It was very successful, and a lot of folks take advantage of that. Uh, and certainly it's a great community event. We have people lined up there forty-five minutes to an hour and four waiting in line, so they get first pick. Uh, in the center, you'll see that Fane Middle has just added a bee hive on the inside there. Uh, of course, there's hop running to the outsides so the bees can get in and out, but you can go in and watch those bees actually build their homes and produce them there in the anchor park. That was a grant by Mr. Alicia Stiles that has provided that opportunity for our students. One more thing about that, I don't want to leave this out. We actually have a beekeeper on staff. He's just, he's Benny Croft. He's, uh, uh, he does that as a science business and does very well. And I think everybody around middle school loves him as well. Uh, community involvement, we have lots of things again. Soapbox Derby just took place this weekend. Uh, that's a picture of our veterans there. I want to take a minute to recognize our parent volunteers. We love to have those parent volunteers coming to the middle school. A lot of times our kids are at that age, it's a little awkward about having their parents come in. But we do have a tremendous little group of parents that, um, heal their parenting policy. And they also come in with events that we have and help out, and they are hardworking. And at the top, there are two pictures there of Camp Conunion. Uh, this is a grieving camp for young people. Um, we're up to, there's been a death in the family of a young person in the community. Um, they provided this group camp on the day, on Saturday, that took place a couple of weeks ago. And it's the first time they've had that since two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And, uh, it was a huge success. Ms. Amy Levers was at the age with hospice, uh, does a tremendous job with that. I think they had about forty, fifty students that day. And it's just a great day. And they use our facility, and then we work plus other things we look at around campus. And finally, uh, swap stories at work. We did have several projects in the works, but this one has turned out to be great. We, uh, actually talked Dr. Ramsey, went up to the high school, looked at the floor and the, the Apple, the media center, some of the offices. We had some issues with some tile in a couple of lunchrooms. So, we decided to give this a try in a couple of lunchrooms, see how they hold up and have a look. And to this day, after the students have been all over it and blue desk and things, it looks just like the lady put it down. So, hopefully, this will be a solution to the current tile that we have as time goes on. And this, uh, advantage of that is it's no wax. Basically, you mop it, clean it, and it just looks like the lady put it down. It's a laminate base. Uh, and it seems to be very durable, and it's certainly very pretty, as you can see. And I appreciate the opportunity to get to speak with you guys, and I would guarantee any questions.
Got your comment. The REACH program, in my opinion, is one of the most beautiful kids-first programs that we have going. It's, if we could see how that affects those lives of those particular students and follow them through life, we could write some books, I suppose. Another thought is that all, every one of those programs that you talked about, you talked about parent involvement. There's a teacher that's volunteered and giving their time. They don't just come in and teach for six hours and do their work study. There's a teacher behind every one of those programs or maybe more. They are the doers. They are the kids-first. They're the life changers, and I agree with you. Those programs are as, as valuable as, uh, studies and courses and et cetera. Very important part of their lives.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next up, Director of Nutrition and Wellness, Ms. Pacquiao is going to give us a central office update for nutrition and wellness.
Did I say Martha I am? It's Martha. Martha, we, please, Martha, I can't follow that. You can't follow that. Could it be more powerful, you know, this evening? This evening, I'd like to give you an update about nutrition and wellness, just some things that we have going on in our cabinet. So, our program goals are to provide nutritious meals, meet our federal guidelines, and provide a good value for the meal being served, being cost efficient, and provide exceptional customer service. For those of you who attended awards night the other evening, it was great pleasure to see that two of the scholarships are directly driven from folks who work in nutrition and do their fundraising for our students, which I think says a lot about the heart of the people that I work with. Right now, we always sort of update with our wellness at this time of year. This is something that's saying encourages us to do. We do have wellness groups at every single school, and we meet once a quarter. And so, anyone can meet on our wellness committee if they desire to be. It's none other than teachers, faculty, staff, and others who want to be a part of the community that come to school for these meetings. And they know a lot of different things, and we try to incorporate wellness with our other programs. A lot of CTA comes into it. Also, we're incorporating things for adults. So, this year, the middle school was very cracky. They challenged, the students challenged their teachers to basically walk. And then they started in with trying to compete with one another. And then they started to start checking everyone's blood pressure. It was pretty funny. So, anytime they thought that the teachers were losing or they didn't, you know, they had the, what happened, they'd go down and go to take that teacher's blood pressure in the hall just to see if they were getting it. It was very cute. And it brought a whole lot camaraderie that wellness is a lifelong choice, and we're all in it together. Uh, we also try to increase our students' access to agriculture, and we're working in the winter rooms with that as well. So, things that our kids are growing, we're bringing them in and serving them. We're washing our fruits and vegetables that are grown in our schools and providing those opportunities for the children to taste them. We're also saving things, our scraps for our chickens. And we're helping the babies sustain the things we have going at our school property. So, we're really trying to work together to show where food is, how it's grown, and how it nourishes our bodies. All about promoting healthy eating habits. One of the things that we've worked with this year, we have ranked to receive the Georgia Organics grant. So, we have partnered now for a couple of years with them, and we actually received two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, which was wonderful, and they only gave fourteen thousand out to get them. So, we split that two ways. The middle school continued their farming composting, so they're using their wormways to grow those beautiful plants you just saw. So, what we did last year with the compost is actually being used in our greenhouse this year as our school at Fane County Middle School. And at the high school, we went in and we worked with the legacy garden, and we brought in lots of our CTA people. So, our construction folks came in. They thought to do the middle of our tables. We had all kinds of groups with agriculture and other people coming in to work together to use these funds and to bring community to our schools. And then we also had a, and the high school also did with our students had an opportunity to use that area for the animals this past week. So, we're really trying to take what we have, bring it up to snuff, and really enjoy it and continue to build community with things that are important with us, with our wellness and with our nutrition. And I know you all know all about that golden radish. So, I will apply for the golden radish for this year and the next month, and hopefully, we will win that again. So, we have been very, very active with golden radish, which is again incorporating that farm-to-school philosophy. And you all know me, and you know I love farms. So, it is very near and dear to my heart to pursue that and to also incorporate that with not just adults, but with our students. So, some updates for next year. There's some things that are changing right now in our cafeterias. We're going back to pre-COVID. I don't know if you all know it, but today marks the end of the pandemic and the, the total support of the government that this was a, the pandemic was done with it. So, today's it. Which is an exciting thing for a lot of reasons. There's a lot of implications for a lot of different fields with the end of that era. For us in the cafeteria, it means that we can go back to serving with the serving lines like we used to. And we don't have to individually bag and wrap and bag and wrap every single item. That has already been in our cafeterias in the last two weeks. We are changing our software. We're updating software with the health of technology for our front of the house and back of the house. We are also wanting to push forward with doing things more technologically advanced, which will benefit our community. So, we had had the ability to accept free reuse applications online. Our new software will make that even more simple. So, instead of a parent having to fill out an application for free reuse meals, get it into their child's backpack, they give the child's backpack to a teacher, from the teacher to cafeteria, from cafeteria to me. You can fill out online and I have it. So, it will be much more expeditious, much more efficient. Uh, very excited about that opportunity and really want to improve our community. So, please always consider filling out an application. We will help our community with anything we can with our finances and making our children. Which brings me to the next piece of business, which is all about compliance. A lot of folks don't understand how we derive our prices in our cafeterias and how we price our meals. And it isn't something that I decide. I am battled by the rules of the USDA. And so, there is something called a paid lunch equity tool and a non-programmed food revenue tool. So, this month, we went ahead and adjusted our all-the-part prices. So, things that are not part of our meal program, the carbs, the, the rice, the treats, the baked potato chips. Things that are just extras. We did have to increase the cost of those to try to go into compliance with one of these tools. We're not there yet, and I understand that might be a bit of cost to our families if they don't want to buy. I understand, but it is not going to affect what we're doing in our cafeteria. So, I want you all to know that. I want you to know that that's not about what we're actually serving children to eat on a daily basis. This is the extra stuff. It's the bloody things. On the actual cost of our meals, it's important to know that our average cost per plate for everything we are doing is four dollars and thirty-two cents. And right now, we are charging two dollars and thirty-five cents at the elementary and two dollars and sixty cents at the middle and high school. So, there's some things about that that give me a lot of cause for concern. So, the prices, and you all know this if you've gone to the grocery store, but has anyone seen your bill? Has anyone seen your bill? So our cost of our groceries is up roughly 30% in the last year. And I'm doing my level best to make sure that we do not have to extend that cost to our students. And I want our community to know that, and I want you to know that. We are working very hard to keep our costs for the students' meals as low as possible and staying in compliance with what I have to follow through the USDA. So all of that I say because we have a large increase in student debt this year. And I want our parents to know that we understand and that I'm so appreciative of all of you for your heart at feeding our children. And that as parents have the ability to pay that bill, we are so grateful that they do. And that we are trying our very best to work with everyone, with our students and their meals and costs and things that may incur, because every one of us has felt it in our own pocket as the economy has changed. So right now, I'm not ready to tell you about meal costs. I'm still sharpening my pencil. We have another meeting with the State Department of Education in about two weeks to discuss these things. So I do not want to set our meal costs yet for bad and handy for next year. Because I again want to do the best that I can to keep our costs as low as possible for our students and our families. So I'll be back beyond the June or July for that. But there's some things coming up for next year that are going to make people really excited. We're going to reduce sodium again. Yeah, I wish everybody could see if everybody's facing here. They're really excited about that too. So we'll go to West Cal Park at 1A for sodium. So we'll get some more seasoning things and shake it up. I'm sure. We will continue with our 8% whole brain rich. And right now, and nutrition standards are still, they're being very highly discussed, and they have not passed the binding rules yet. But yeah. Also, for next year, I thought, what, I thought I showed y'all some fun things, Mr. Inslee? So some fun things from this year. Right now, every one of your schools has a 100 other sanitation score. And I've done that for both of their sanitation reviews from the Department of Public Health. You have employees that are almost everyone, everyone who's known us more than a year, is certific certified as a manager. Your local restaurants don't have that. The people in your departments that you work with us, they have such pride in their job. We have served 215,354 breakfasts this year. We have served 245,862 lunches for a total, as of last week, of 461,216 meals in our schools. So what does that really look like? Well, that's 47,980 bananas. That's 2,664 heads of lettuce. How about 12,990 pounds of chicken necks? Or 67,492 slices of pizza? 12,000 apples? 2,305 pounds of cucumbers? Guys, we're feeding our kids. I'm very grateful that we are feeding our kids. We do have a contract again for next year for food. Praise the Lord for that.
Amen.
I'm very excited. Tomorrow, we get to find out our milk. So tomorrow, we're going to bid for our milk for next year. So a lot of great things are happening. And our world is changing, and I want to do the best that I can for our school and our department. It is absolutely my joy to be where I am at. Do any of you have any questions?
Comment.
Yes, sir.
I hope your online registration with reduced meals, I hope it really boosts because indirectly, I think that really helps your program.
It does. And it helps our community. And this community is my heart. This is where I lived my whole life. These are my people. We are family. And I want to see people who can qualify to get that qualification so that they don't have this burden of something that can be helped.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
We are so incredibly lucky to have you.
Amen.
Hard work doesn't come close to describing what you do. Sourcing this food, as you and I well know, has become a real problem, a real issue. Whenever you triple the cost of diesel fuel, quadruple the cost of fertilizer, and production costs are significantly higher across the board, you still have to get the food from the farm to the distributor and then to the school. And when it costs more to deliver the food than the the companies that distribute it can afford, that leaves us with no source. And we've become spoiled in this country when it comes to the quantity and quality of our food sources. We just assume that those grocery stores are going to be full of beautiful produce and meat, all the things we enjoy. But the last few years have been tough. So my hat's off to you, and thank you so much. I couldn't think of a better person for the job with your dedication to this community and to agriculture, your background in farming. Perfect fit. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Just let me add an amen to that.
Thanks, sir. I agree.
461,000?
Yes.
In one year?
Yes. And that's a total of 20,000 boys blowing that off. We said that every week again, right? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Daner, do we have any public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, we have four. The first one is Mr. Lang Bishop. He wants to speak on school security.
Thank you, sir.
You don't have time.
Mr. Inslee, if you'll pull up. Mr. Bishop, did Mr. Daner go over the terms of public participation with you, sir?
I can't hear what she's saying.
Did Mr. Daner go over the terms of public participation with you, sir? And you understand?
He ain't gonna be able to say anymore than I had to. And I am trying to make a show. I wrote it down, I'll read it, you three bear with me. How about that?
That's good.
I do have copies of each one of you, and I hope you will take what I'm saying seriously. Literally, you're gonna read it, so bear with me. Said, hello, folks, and I hope you have a good day. My name is Lang Bishop. I am a voter, a taxpayer, and a citizen of Fanning County, the proud people of the law. Due to the line of my work, I get the opportunity to talk with many people each day. I've had many questions about the school security system. Since I have known most of you a long time, I try to, excuse me, I don't can't say too well, I try to assure people, we have men of honor on this school. And I truly believe that, and I take my hat off to each one of them. We want to protect the Fanning County's best security system that we can have in this state. And I'm not, I can elaborate, go down a lot of rabbit trails here, things I've heard, but I'm not gonna do that. But Richard Wood, who is the state school superintendent, has told me that Fanning County has one of the best school systems in the state of Georgia.
Amen.
And I agree with him. It's not perfect, but he says it's definitely one of the best. And I think that is a real compliment to the past board members and to this board. So I just want to get that said upfront, though I personally believe that. And I get a lot of questions from people, and I'm not going to get in too much, but I've got three things that I want to bring before you, and I hope you listen real seriously to what I'm gonna say. I'm dead serious about this. Number one, do we have a trained armed guard at every school in this system? And then from that, I'm saying, why do we or why do we not have that? And I'd like an answer for that, and I'm flattered, not now, I know that's not part of it. Number two, does the board have a, what I am calling a litter box policy? That is that any student that thinks they are an animal can bring a litter box to school and use it accordingly? If this is so, I ask that you rescind it immediately. And get a trained professional to help those people who are dealing with this reversion, because that's what it is, in my opinion. Number three, please go into executive session to discuss these matters. I know that a visible armed guard is only part of a security system. And there's certainly other things about our security system that have to be kept confidential. So I'm quite aware of that. And we're not trying to get you to reveal any, whatever you have done or haven't done, but the public guard out there doesn't really know how you're guarding all these children we've seen here. Why to sit back them in his thrill of seeing all these kids? I don't want one of them to be killed by some screwball. And it can't say it can't happen in Fanning County. There's not one of you up there to make that statement, because you don't know when it's gonna happen, and neither do I. So I would ask that you go into executive session, discuss it. And then I'm asking also that you put an article in the local paper, the News Observer, and tell the citizens, the voters, the taxpayers, and the citizens of this county how you're protecting our children. You are doing that, I know you are. But most people don't know that, folks. And I talked to probably a few people that anybody on this board does every day. They don't know. Let's educate them so they will know. They'll have more confidence in the board, more confidence in the school, and certainly the protection of the children. That is the number one goal. There is no other goal, and I have no other agenda other than that. One last thing, I'm through. I would remind us all, beginning with me, that we all will answer to the God of heaven for the power and authority that he has given us to confront evil up front. And no compromise for what we could have done and we did not do. Thank you for the time you gave.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Mr. Daner?
Ms. Miller, our second public comment is Ms. Ashley Weeks. She wants to speak on employee sick leave.
First of all, I appreciate y'all picking this thing here and speaking on such an awesome matter as this employee sick leave. I don't know if y'all understand, but employee sick leave bank is very standard at lots of other schools. So I'm in contact for you guys already. So whether it be Tennessee, Georgia, or Carolina, all our ordering schools already do this. It's standard practice. So I'm just, I'm a concerned employee or a concerned citizen, concerned about our employees of this county. I'm like him, I have a business in this county, and I talk to people on a day-to-day basis as well. And there's a lot of people who have told me personally that they have tried to donate sick days to other employees when they've exhausted their own sick days. And they've been told straight now. Okay, so that immediately was a concern for me personally, because I have my own personal story in relation to this public sick bank issue. Okay, so just to make sure we understand what I'm saying is, teachers are employees of Fanning County school system, they earn their sick days, right? So some faculty members never even had that opportunity because they've got sick kids or whatever, but there's a lot of employees have lots and lots of sick days banked up. And those are their sick days, and they earn those sick days and do whatever they want with those sick days. A lot of people retire late on their sick days. So we have multiple employees, yeah, multiple employees in our system who are in this exact situation, serious situations in their families, where their families are super sick. You know, we got one that's his wife, and you've got one that's their daughter. Both of them in serious situations. So if you're in the one, if you're in that situation, I've been there, which I'll talk about, the last thing you want to think about is how many sick days you have left. Am I gonna get paid? Am I gonna have my insurance? Those are not things you want to think about. Okay, so if you have teachers or employees of the school system who are willing to give their hard-earned days up in donation to another employee, that should be standard practice. To me, that's a no-brainer. They're their days, and they earned those days. Okay? So I'll speak just briefly on my own situation. So my child Brady, he's six and turning seventeen this summer. So seventeen, four years ago, I took my, I took a job at Union County High School as, I had been teaching several years, it was my first year there. And they didn't know me from that one, but I taught one single school year there. And then I had my son in June, obviously didn't have a clue anything was going to be wrong. And then bam, there I was, in a hospital stay for three months or so, watching my son fight for his life on a day-to-day basis. So if you think for a second that I was concerned about health school or sick days or anything else, I wasn't. I was concerned that he was gonna live or die. And I think that's a similar situation that current employees are in right now. So I never did anything, I never asked for help, I never did anything. But there I was in the school system that I didn't even know, and these teachers were lining up in droves to donate me sick days, which I didn't even know was a thing. So I wrote my appointment out in June, July. And then when it's time for school to start back, I knew I wasn't gonna go to come back to school because he was still super sick in the hospital. So at Union, they donated days for me, August, September, October, November, December, January, and February, without me even asking. So I don't know if y'all understand how important that was. Okay, my insurance was there. I never had to worry about anything. Even when I came home and stayed with him at home, they continued to donate days. They donated days to me until I made the decision to resign there. And even after I resigned there, they donated money to us, they offered me my job back for years to come post that. So what I want to say to you guys, as a Fanning County school system, that is Union County. I'm not even from there. And literally, I still feel loyalty to them and thank them so much to this day, seventeen years later, for something so simple as teacher donating sick days. Okay? So one thing I have to kind of throw around, and I'll be, I'll be super quick, is legality. So I've heard people say, oh, well, it's illegal for people to donate days. That's just not true. I think people confuse this policy and legal. Those are not the same thing. You got law, like real law, and then you got a school policy. Okay, so there is no school wall against me donating my sick time to someone else. Okay, so unless you're in a situation where you have like a workers comp issue where I'm drawing workers comp and then you're donating sick days, that's a legality issue. But otherwise, it's an empathy issue. It is us, because teachers may not have enough dollars to give, they may have a sick day to give. It is a very, very easy way for Fanning County schools to allow employees to be supportive of each other and build value to each other and really boost morale in our school system. And it's really quick, you know, but I know y'all can't speak back to us right now, but I am speaking through the community. So we will continue to email each one of you as often as possible to hear a resolution on this matter, because this really is a simple thing that requires a very simple answer. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Daner?
Ms. Miller, our next public comment is Ms. Sandra Doherty. She wants to speak on how nine missing children.
Ms. Doherty? Do you understand the terms of participation of Mr. Daner whenever we need?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Doherty, and I am a concerned grandparent of Jordan and the Fanning County School District. Recently, it has come to my attention that a number of organizations have contacted Union County School District to pressure school administrators to broaden the language of time online to include sexual orientation and gender identity, something which undermines federal law and legislative authority in the United States Congress. While some progressive organizations have followed the misleading guidance of the Department of Education 2021 Notice of Interpretation of the Department of Education 2021 Notice of Interpretation following President Biden's executive orders on the Supreme Court ruling in the Vostok versus Clayton County, both have been significantly misinterpreted, as it was made clear by the court that the latter was a Title VII issue that did not apply to Title IX or any other law. The Supreme Court in the Vostok emphasized that sex-based employment discrimination consistent with Title IX is unconstitutional, but explicitly refrained from applying their ruling to Title IX. As such, this renders the Department of Education's NOI and the executive order null because it expressly contradicts Supreme Court precedent. If this wasn't enough, there has been a handful of cases further demonstrating the inapplicability of the Vostok ruling to Title IX issues. This includes a recent ruling out of a federal court, a federal district court issuing a preliminary injunction barring the execution of the Biden administration NOI and executive order from taking effect in twenty states, including Georgia. Separately, a federal district court in Texas affirmed that sexual orientation and gender, gender identity are not protected categories because Title IX must be read in the original context in which it was drafted in nineteen seventy-two, in which sex under Title IX was understood to be biological and binary. A federal appellate court in Florida, Georgia, and Alabama jurisdictions also found this to be true, ruling that a local school board's bathroom policy did not violate Title IX because Title IX conforms to an understanding of sex consistent with societal understanding of sex at the time of its drafting. Beyond this, applying any directive that neither conforms to the recent rulings nor takes into consideration the necessity of receiving congressional approval before making a change to federal law is itself an unconstitutional act. In the Vostok case, the Supreme Court stated that the people's representation representatives are the ones who must amend Title IX, thereby making it unlawful for unelected officials, including school board members, to assume changes to Title IX in the absence of approval to amend Title IX, a power reserved exclusively to Congress. I would ask you to consider this information before acting on the coercive tactics by organizations intentionally misapplying Title IX to push a political agenda that would eradicate Title IX sex-specific protections that require Title IX to be faithfully understood as it was at the time it was drafted. The serious consequence of this misapplication includes the erosion of student privacy stemming from the rights of students to use sex-separated facilities and to participate in sex-separated sporting activities. To prevent this from happening, I urge you to take last statement into account as you deliberate, deliberate action on this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Danner?
Thank you, Ms. Danner.
Ms. Miller, our next public comment is Ms. David Holton. She also wants to speak on Title IX misinterpretation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Holton, do you understand the terms of public participation as explained by Ms. Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord, for letting me talk to you again. I and others have come before you in the past year warning you about the Title IX changes that are coming down. And I appreciate the fact that so far, in Fannie County, and I am so grateful, thankful to you that right now, our bathrooms are still biologically separated, our sports are separated. But on April the sixth of twenty twenty-three, that's just a month ago, the President, Biden Administration did an executive order which is trying to expand the definition in Title IX. That means that's coming down to you guys. It's gonna come down from the federal to the state, and then from the state down to you. If we accept federal funds, we have to apply by federal guidelines. We have SLOST, we have a very, very good budget for our school district, and if it comes down to accepting federal funds and making our boy or allowing our boys to be in the girls' bathroom or our girls' and boys' bathroom, I say, tell the federal funds, no, thank you. You are board members, and you have the power and the authority to make these decisions. The state's superintendent told himself that you have this authority. You have this voting right, and it is up to you what goes on in Fannie County schools. And I'm just begging you that we continue to keep the morals that Fannie County School System has been based on, and that we continue to keep our bathrooms separated, that we continue to keep our sports separated by biological sex rather than what somebody identifies with. I did give Mr. Danner some legal timelines of exactly what's been going on in the last few years on Title IX, and he's gonna give it to you. And I would wish for you to read those, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holton. Mr. Chair, our next item on the agenda is the facilities update. With that, I would like to invite Mr. Danner and Danner Board to present that to you, please.
Yes, Board, I do have packets from Ms. Holton and also Mr. Bishop there that I'll give to you after the board.
Mr. Danner?
Board, this time of year, again, a lot of things not really going on much in the schools when it comes to facilities. So once again, I'm gonna give you some work order updates. So the total number of work orders as of yesterday is one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine, that is recorded work orders. So to break that down, there's per facility. This is not, all completed, of course, if you add those, it does not come up to one thousand seven hundred fifty-nine. This is back as of May the second. So Nutrition is the department that wins the most work order award. Congratulations to Ms. Williams. Again, that'd be another type of award you might get. High school, of course, has the most work orders. A bigger campus, so again, you won't have more work orders. The joke is, Ms. York drains things at night and sends it in the middle of the night, send work orders. That happened pretty often. Old West Garage knows there's forty-eight times that we have been work order wise. I bet the numbers out there are beside the pumps. That was as of the second. As of today, the pumps I've been cranked that we've recorded one hundred and twenty-five times. At one time, we had three pumps there, now we've got two pumps there. So make it real easy, say if there was only two pumps, that's two hundred and fifty times we had to crank the pumps. And
Thank you, Mr. Danner.
Yeah, do so. Mr. Mathis now has been trained, so we've got three people now between, actually, we have seven people between Max Hartman, Mathis, and myself. Again, which is gonna lead us right into the next facilities, I think, Mr. Danner. So again, the Max Hartman does a great job, so again. This is our finalized drawing from the architect. This is how hopefully we're going to remedy the pump situation. That's a total of seven hundred and ninety-one linear feet of sixty-inch high-performance polypropylene storm drain. There's two junction boxes that's in there. One junction box is gonna be a new casting plate structure, and they reconnect all the pipes. That's the one on the floor right there. We're going to abandon the old pipe that's there. And then once, once the new pipe gets entered, or gets entered and is functional, then they're gonna come back in and route the old drain. Now, how in the world we're gonna do that, I have no idea. Again, that's in the contract. So again, hopefully, within the next, within several hours, hopefully by tomorrow, we will get you a GMP on that project, and get going on it if y'all so would. Hope you just want, can you crank the pumps for the rest of my career here in Fannie County, I'll be right back. I prefer not to do that. That's it, all services.
Thank you, Mr. Danner.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Do we have an estimated life on polypropylene pipe?
Actually, I read that today, Mr. Danner. It is a hundred-year life cycle, a minimum hundred-year life cycle. I try to do as much research as I can, and it's, it's our blisters. They got numbers in there that I have no idea. And I've made phone calls to the CEM and to the engineers. And this new pipe is actually under airports and, I mean, I've got a ton of research on it. I'll be glad to send it to you.
No, that's fine. Did I understand it, sixty inches?
Yes, sir. Sixty-inch in diameter. This new, this new pipe, the metal pipe that's in there now, the exterior, of course, is very rigid, you know, you know what a drain pipe looks like. This new, this new polypropylene has got a smooth interior. So the exterior is the rigid, but this new pipe is smooth, and it's actually pretty robust.
Actually, if you needed to go in there and remove something, you could do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we won't be here a hundred years from now, so.
Probably not.
Yes, but we wanna leave it better than we found it, Mr. Danner.
Got it, got it.
This was, we still don't know when that, the old pipe was actually installed. Guessing probably back in the eighties. Again, there's no research, people try to go back on the deeds and everything, and you cannot find out.
And I'm guessing the reason they're going back and fill the old pipe up so it won't.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Next item on the agenda is to approve surplus equipment bid for the Fannie County High School lockers. Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Danner?
Mr. Danner, you might be blocking my recording. Last month, we come to you, High School sent a request to remove, actually, to declare some old lockers as surplus. So again, you approved that last month on the thirteenth. I believe the one on the left, I think it, was after last month's, they four come along on the left. This is what y'all approved last month to declare surplus, nine different lots of lockers. It's actually stored at the ag facility in the, in the stores buildings there. High school has, you know, I gotta get those out there, and then he brings them to the stores. So that, that's what you approved last month, go ahead, go ahead and open up that segment. So we had actually a bid opening this past Tuesday, and we had one bidder. Mr. Bobby Bearden was the only bidder that we had. He bid on all nine lots for a total of two hundred and fifty dollars. And there's the memo, Miss Lindsay. So again, I, the only bid we have, two hundred and fifty dollars, get our store filled empty. Again, if y'all approve that, I'll call Mr. Bearden after this meeting is over and tell him he got it.
I bet he'll answer some.
Probably so.
All right, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve this presented.
We will. Our recommendation, do I hear a motion? Slow move. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's four.
I'll bow out.
And Mr. Bearden is going to abstain.
Yes.
So motion carries.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be looking for that phone call.
You've got twenty-four hours to get them out, I think.
Next item on the agenda is to approve Mr. Financial Report's Director of Finance, Ms. Nguyen.
Good evening, gentlemen, and good morning. We have our general fund financial segment from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We're seventy-five percent complete this year. Our luck revenue is at ninety-four point nine two percent versus ninety-three point five two percent for the prior year. Total revenues are at eighty-six point four four percent versus eighty-six point four zero percent from the prior year. General expenditures are at sixty-six point four five percent versus sixty-seven point two three percent from the prior year. And that's the general fund. Then we have our capital projects. That's everything today to do with the capital project. We have our special revenues, which is called the capital funds, all cares, all pre-K, everything that's a special revenue. And then we have our school nutrition fund.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Chair, I make recommendations to approve this presented.
Do I have a recommendation? Do I hear a motion?
Slow move.
And a second.
Second.
Motion second to approve the district financial report. Any discussion? All those in favor? Donors unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is asset update, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes, sir. We received eight hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-three cents for the month of March. So that was all received in April, collected in March, and it's a lot of spending in the prior year.
Excellent. Any questions?
I'll comment on that. That is a reduction that tax and mortgage, they would be dealing with and have to work with. It's awesome.
Yes, sir. It is still an increase from the prior year, too.
Next item on the agenda is to approve school quarterly financial reports, Ms. Nguyen.
And we have our, we have our Lewis Elementary School first. It shows all the different funds, buildings, et cetera. And then we have our East Band Elementary. And our West Band. And then the middle school. And then the high school. And then we have the K. And that's from March thirty-first, from July first to March thirty-first.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make recommendations to approve this presented.
Do I have a recommendation? Do I hear a motion?
Slow move.
And a second?
You have a second.
Motion second to approve the school quarterly financial reports. Any discussion? All those in favor? Donors unanimous, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the FY twenty-four budget timeline, Ms. Nguyen.
Is it that time of year again, for us to get to knocking in for our budget? Then we have our total outline calendar for our budget timeline. May the thirty-first, we'll advertise that we'll have our public meeting on June eighth at five P.M. And then in our rec, five thirty P.M. meeting on June eighth, we'll approve the city resolution. We'll also advertise on the twenty-eighth, day of June, for our July public meeting, which will be July thirteenth at five P.M. And then our record meeting will be at five P.M. And then we'll also approve our record meeting to attend the budget for FY twenty-four. And then we'll advertise July nineteenth to have that advertised for attended budget. And then our office attend at our, five thirty P.M. meeting, we would ask for approval for our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make recommendations to approve this presented.
Do I have a recommendation? Do I hear a motion?
Slow move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the, this year, two thousand twenty-four budget timeline. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Next item on the agenda is the C T A E program update, Chief Academic Officer, Lennis Ruff.
Good evening, Gordon. Uh, so, Mr. Rangler, you've been along the way. Thank you. Well, as we saw, you know, earlier with all the state level and national level, uh, competitor and all those students, our C T A programs are a legacy spot right now. And I have a lot of people to thank for that. Uh, I thank each, each one of you, uh, board members, I thank our, our superintendent, central office, Dr. Ransley, uh, Mr. Henson, their hard work. Lot goes into, um, Mr. Hensley. Perfect. So just, uh, and then also the middle school, uh, Mr. Young and, and, and the job that admin's done there to make sure that we have, uh, good connections with the C T A E. So for the upcoming year, uh, we have computer science, healthcare, agriculture, exploratory. So that's where, uh, that will take care of the outdoor classroom, the droughts unlimited, all that that's gone into, uh, this year. Uh, we'll have that again coming up next year. And then engineering and technology and also embedding entrepreneurship days. So all those are C T A based connections that we'll have in our middle school, uh, coming up, uh, for, for the upcoming school year. And then also next year, for the, uh, high school, we will have, uh, five agriculture pathways, carpentry, fine furniture, welding, audio video, computer programming, teaching as a profession, general medicine, nursing or patient care, sports medicine, pharmacy, food nutrition, engineering and technology, work-based learning, uh, and then also, uh, an E N T course that's very specific to certain students. Uh, you'll remember Trent Lowery that came a few months ago that, that took place, uh, that took part in that, we'll offer that again for next year. And then also again, uh, the growing automotive technology program. Uh, for this year, uh, when it comes to pathway completers, if you can, all our ag, uh, programs, uh, pathways, we had forty-seven pathway completers. So what this means, these are, these are students that completed three courses, uh, level one, level two, level three, that allow them to be a pathway completer, uh, at the high school level. And so carpentry, we had thirty-three, that's an increase from the previous year. Fine furniture, twelve, that's an increase from the previous year. Welding held steady at thirty-six. Audio video and nine completers, that's also an increase. And then early childhood education, uh, had thirteen, which is an increase. Teaching as a profession, again, five, another increase. General medicine, uh, held steady at fifteen. Uh, nursing an increase, uh, pharmacy, uh, with three, and that's a very specific program, uh, that, that doesn't really allow more than, uh, you know, a handful of kids to complete that. Sports medicine, thirty-eight, there's an increase. Uh, food nutrition, twenty-five, and engineering, which had an increase as well. So I wanted to put all those increases out there to show you that we're heading in the right direction when it comes to the number of, of kids that are completing C T A pathways at high school. Um, also, again, as you saw earlier, with a giant group of students that you still with to take pictures, um, these, uh, career and technical student organizations, these C T S Os, lots of success this year. Uh, I'm required to share with you guys every year, um, at this time, the number of student members that we have in each one of our C T S Os. And so we have the fifty-four at S C C L A, Crystal Stones the sponsor, F F A, the high school, one hundred and eighteen, F F A, the middle school, four hundred and thirty-seven, uh, H O S A, sixty-four, Skills USA, forty-nine, T S A, the high school, thirty-four, and T S A, the middle school, sixteen. So that, those are impressive numbers all the way around. And then just a few quick highlights, obviously there's so much that I, I could stand here and talk all day really if I, if I wanted to about all the things we have going on in C T A E, but just a few quick hitters. Uh, we continue to offer the healthcare clinical rotations, uh, so that's Jerry King and Ann Gibbs. Um, kids get tons of hands-on experience in the healthcare program for those clinical rotations that we do around the community. Again, that E N T program, uh, that, uh, that was able to, we, as soon as they were to complete that, with the nighttime courses that counted as high school credits. So thinking outside the box there, uh, it's really impressive with that program. Uh, automotive, we, we were able to utilize some slot funds to get that program going. And, uh, and I say it's pretty neat that, uh, you know, we are, uh, right now, no, we have better facilities to come, but right now, we're, we're competing against schools that have automotive technology labs that are state-of-the-art, and we're beating them in competitions. So, uh, that, that says a lot for what Mr. Dilbeck's doing there. Uh, career affairs and adulting day, uh, welding, same thing, uh, with, with, with those, uh, uh, competitions, the second step of automotive, we're, we're beating teams left and right, those com- competitions. Uh, C T S O, uh, success, we saw that, uh, earlier. The credit home scholarships, uh, that those are builders that offer, uh, scholarships. Initially, we had eight students receive a ten thousand dollar scholarship, uh, to work in the instruction industry or the engineering industry. Uh, economic development partnership award, uh, you can remember that from earlier in the year, that's a very big deal. That's a system-wide award that everybody had to work really hard to obtain, and that, that's a D O E level award that, that our school system was able to, to, to obtain. We're really proud of that. Um, and then a charter video that featured our welding program and our superintendent, Ms. Miller, uh, that was, uh, uh, pretty exciting. We were able to, to pull that off and have that charter video that featured our welding program and featured Emmeline Cochran, who was the, uh, female welder that was talked about earlier. Also, we have the continuation of the Georgia Public Broadcasting videos and everything that, that, uh, these ladies here are doing, the, with the outdoor classroom, the middle school. Uh, so, so Ms. Art and Ms. Gal, thank you for everything that you're doing there. Um, also, the, the, uh, the S M S C T A, any sports or requests, again, just all the hands-on learning that our kids are able to, to take, take, take part in, at, at multiple levels across our school system, just very thankful that we have those opportunities. And then I wanted to also mention that for the first time, uh, we, all three of our elementary schools, uh, got together and had an elementary school robotics exhibition. Uh, so next year, uh, we're going to probably call that a competition. This year, we had an exhibition, uh, you know, and they had to compete, but, um, they, uh, that was really, really impressive, they were able to pull that off, too. Um, we always have some type of just overall, over, overarching goal for the C T A E program. So last year, uh, it was to increase, increase collaboration between our high school C T A E teachers and our academic teachers. And so I just want to say, uh, thank you to the teachers that were able to help that and pull that off. Um, we, we had lots of examples, I just put a few up here, uh, Mr. Deaf Engineering, Ms. Gillon Physics, uh, they were able to work on a project together that involved velocity and high-speed derby cars. Uh, Ms. Adams and Ms. Stone with food nutrition and Ms. Howard with chemistry. Uh, they got together and worked on a calorie and chemical compound analysis project, and also Adams and Stone, uh, and then with Ms. Gillon Biology, they worked on a cell structure project together. And then finally, Coach Chassane, Carpentry, and, uh, Mr. Hostic with drama, uh, Coach Chassane helped with the scent design, uh, for, uh, the, uh, the actual productions. Uh, this year, our goal, uh, and, and Mr. Henson can, uh, you know, we worked really hard to come up with again, just kind of overarching goal, and our goal for the upcoming year is to intentionally improve, uh, those employability skills. And that's something we talk about all the time. We're going to really try to put our money where our mouth is this upcoming year, uh, when it comes to those employability skills, just being able to look somebody in the eye, shake their hand, and, uh, and, and be able to interview, you know, uh, things like that. So, uh, finally, uh, now this is a drop from a hundred percent, you know, you can't be perfect all the time, but I did want to make sure that we point out that our C T A E four-year graduation rate is ninety-eight point six percent, which is outstanding, that's really, really good across the state. So again, these are, what this means is any kid that, that takes part in C T A E, that's the graduation rate for those kids. So that just shows that taking part in the C T A E programs pushes kids across that finish line, uh, or I should say the starting line, uh, for graduation. And next, so Mr. Hensley is the one on the right, go to the link on the right.
Before we move on, Mr. Ruff.
Yes, sir.
A student that starts school, how many of those opportunities can they be involved in, in the time that they're in school?
Oh, my goodness. Uh, I don't know that I could do the math on that, sir. That would be, that'd probably be, uh, probably be endless. I mean, the opportunities that they have, you need to take part in these different programs. Um, if, if you look at, um...
Core system, right?
Yes, sir. I'd ask of Mr. Lee's, like, what opportunity, how many pathways they complete before they graduate?
Now, how many, how many could they touch? Have opportunities, hands-on, individual?
I would think from elementary through high school, a student can have the opportunity to, uh, in some capacity, take part in almost every single one of those programs that you see, because when you look at elementary school, they have opportunities to, to see robotics, uh, to, to have ag experiences in the elementary school. You look at the middle school, they have healthcare experiences in the middle school. You know, so, uh, if, if, if a student, you know, play their cards right, they could have opportunities to, to see all those different types of learning opportunities throughout.
There's a reason I asked that question. If I'm not mistaken, I had health. I had typing.
Yes, sir.
And of course math and, uh, library, and I had one, one, one course, one hour of shop. We had four or five weeks of welding and the touch of automotive, the build in the toolbox. That's what I was offered when I was in school.
Absolutely. The students have the opportunity for us to, to make those selections, uh, as they come into, to high school based on their interests. Absolutely.
That's something we should all be very proud of. Now that students decide what their pathway is going to be.
We do, we do. Yes, yes, sir. And here, Mr. Rangler, this is just a requirement that I have to, to list the different grants that we apply for. Uh, I'm required to, uh, present this to, to the board members each year. And so this year, we did apply for the following, uh, federal and state level grants, uh, the apprenticeship grant, that goes to help fund the salary of our youth apprenticeship, uh, teacher, uh, ag extended day, ag extended year, and young farmer. Uh, those all, all goes to help fund the salaries for our F F A, uh, sponsors, ag teachers, and young farmer teacher extended day. Uh, that grant goes to help fund, uh, the, uh, ability for all those C T S O sponsors that you saw up here with those students. And then supervision grant, that actually helps fund, uh, my salary. And then, um, uh, purpose plus, that helps purchase our end pathway assessments, professional development, uh, helps to allow our teachers to, to go receive that professional development they need in C T A E, and finally, program improvement. That grant typically goes to allowing all of our C T S Os to, to travel, all of those advisors to do the traveling that they need to go to all the competitions so that they can come back to you guys and, uh, and, and show you all the great things they've done. And I know this is a, a lot, it's a marathon. Again, this is a requirement that I have to, uh, uh, this is our purpose five plan, this is the comprehensive local needs assessment and local application. Uh, if I'm required to share a summary of this with, with you gentlemen, uh, every year, and then ask for your approval, uh, well, uh, your blessing, your approval on this, uh, um, uh, this plan. So the summary, essentially, we have certain categories that we have to, that we get rated, and, uh, in core indicators of performance, we're rated operational, labor market exemplary, size, scope, and quality, operational, career pathway programs of study, operational, recruitment, retention, and professional development, emerging, and equity and access, operational. And then I can explain why we received some of those ratings, uh, here, um, just briefly. For core indicators of performance, uh, we did an amazing job across the board, um, we, you know, we knocked, we really knocked the top out compared to a lot of the school systems in the state. The one reason we did not receive exemplary has to do with credentials of value. And that, that is still, and I hate to say it, but it is still kind of coming back from, uh, what happened during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, last year, our credentials of value, uh, percentage was eleven point zero three. We are up to forty-five point two six percent. We have, we're supposed to get that fifty percent mark, and we're almost there, and I do feel that we'll get that by next year and we'll be able to get an exemplary in, in this category. Uh, size, scope, and quality, uh, actually labor market exemplary because, I mean, it was, we, we were shown to do an outstanding job when it comes to, thank you to our community. Size, scope, and quality, uh, the reason that we, uh, received operational there and not exemplary has to do with our STEM pathway and our information technology pathway. I know that's weird, but to be exemplary, all of your pathways have to be shown to be locally in demand. Well, those are not locally in demand, however, we know that the STEM pathway and the information technology pathway, those are massively in demand across our country and across our states. So we still have to offer those pathways to do, to, do diligence for our, for our students. Um, recruitment, retention, and professional development, uh, we received emerging there because only eighty-five to ninety percent of our C T A teachers, uh, have been in their current role for at least three years. To receive, um, operational or exemplary, we have to add close to a hundred percent. And then, um, moving on from that, you do have the goals, uh, bear with me, gentlemen, um, we're, we're down the long stretch. So the goals, uh, from that plan, uh, that we worked on to develop, um, these are an extension of last year's goals. And so, um, uh, for this school year, uh, we will continue to provide high school students with, uh, entrepreneurship frameworks and opportunities, uh, within all of our C T A courses. And then the, the action set number one that goes with that goal is to continue using the, uh, entrepreneurship framework from the D O E. Action set two, to ensure that we have the necessary classroom equipment for all of our C T A E programs. Moving on, Mr. Rangler. Action set three, uh, to ensure that all of our teachers, uh, director and supervisor are provided with professional learning options, uh, both with students and without students, that fit the soft skill development that we're trying to accomplish. Action set four, to ensure that our teacher, students, and the supervisor participate in C T S Os and C T S O competitions. Uh, action set five, uh, to meet on a consistent basis with our, um, uh, Fayette County Development Authority and Chamber of Commerce and other industry members, uh, to, uh, to make sure that we have those meetings, uh, to, to analyze soft skill and, and employability skill development. And then goal two, uh, we, as a department, we feel so we need to increase, again, continue to increase that female non-traditional program concentration percentage, and also to increase the, uh, special education student pathway completion rate. Those are two goals of ours because those, those just seem to be something we continue to strive for to improve. Uh, action set one for that goal, to ensure that our teachers, again, and director, uh, have recruitment strategies that we use to, to accomplish that. Uh, action set two, to assure that our teachers and students participate in C T S Os and those competitions that you guys, again, saw earlier today. Um, moving on, Mr. Rangler. Action set three, to continue to use our newly hired, uh, C T I teacher, career and tech instruction teacher, uh, to provide students with disabilities within our pathways with, uh, engaging instruction and support and access to the curriculum. Action set four, to ensure that all of our C T A teachers are provided with professional learning. And then action set five, to add more individuals with disabilities, individuals from non-traditional job sectors to our advisory committees and state board meetings. I know that was a, a lot. I agree now. So, um, with that said, with those goals, the action set, that entire plan, I, uh, I am gassed for your approval on that plan. That plan will allow us to spend the funds we need to spend to provide, providing to the, to the students that you guys saw earlier.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation.
Do you have a recommendation? Do I hear a motion?
You certainly do, sir.
And a second.
Same.
We have a motion second to approve the purpose five comprehensive local needs assessment of local applications for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Out of number eighteen on the agenda is approved norms of the Fayette County Board of Education, Chief Academic Officer, Lennis Ruff.
And gentlemen, I know that you guys saw these ahead of time, um, far ahead of time to be able to redo these, these are unchanged from the previous year. I'm not going to stand here and read them all out. Uh, however, these are our board norms. Uh, this is something for, to be the community, be an exemplary board, uh, to have these board norms, to agree to these board norms, and, uh, these board norms, of course, uh, will always be found here, um, on this board meeting, underneath this, uh, this item. Uh, these, uh, board norms, um, again, if approved, uh, will... These board norms, again, if approved, will allow you to continue to do your jobs with integrity and with ethics to be able to candidate and perform.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
You have a recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the norms of the Fannie County Board of Education. All, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would number nineteen on the agenda is to approve the bus use request. Assistant Superintendent Robert Enslie, who's the one?
Dr. Board, good afternoon, board, Ms. Miller. We do have a couple of requests for our buses this summer. The first one is for Core H to take our activity bus to Rock Eagle from June the fifth to June the ninth. Core H should be responsible for the cost of fuel because Kate Phillips is one of our employees that actually has been trained for the end drive, so we're on the cost of fuel itself. Ms. Miller, you want to do this separately or?
Let's do them separately, sir. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
We have a recommendation to approve the structure request, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in three seconds. You can just choose whichever Ms. Miller wants to. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Core H is a wonderful program in the department, that's a great, great opportunity for our kids to grow up here. Thank you for that. The second one is for Mountain Education Charter System. They're requesting a bus for Tuesday, June the sixth, to leave MEC and go to the skate rink to Blue Ridge and then go to Skeet Grill for dinner after which run back to MEC around six thirty. MEC will be responsible for the cost of fuel and the driver. You have another one of our great board partners.
I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
You have a recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second, third, fourth.
Motion in multiple seconds. To approve the flesh's request, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would number twenty is to approve technology property established. Director of Technology Information Assessment, Senator Enslie.
Okay, mine's pretty quick tonight, too. We just have a year cleanup, some items that we were progressing to salvage. My office has three printers and then we have firewall and servers that are really old there that are actually fixed assets, so we have to list those out separately. And then we have one request as well from Westfannon for just some items. And as you know, if things have value, we sell them, so these must be in really bad shape. So I respectfully request your approval to salvage these items.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Excellent. Do I have, do I hear a motion?
You have a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the salvage of this listed property. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you, Ms. Miller. Next item on the agenda is personnel. And the first section is resignation, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to take some of these collectively and some of these individually.
All right.
Give everybody time. Everybody has that open. Everybody ready? Excellent. First, I'd like to recommend to approve the resignation of Billy Joe Pyatt, effective five nineteen twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Excellent. The next will be the five together in this. I'd like to recommend to approve the following resignations of Peggy Newt, Michelle Grove, Heather Smith, David Tupper, Lacy Walden, all effective five twenty-three twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all those in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'd like to recommend to approve the following resignations. Matthew Rosenberg, effective six six twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, are recommendations for higher often in completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. First is Charles Chud Patterson for administrator, effective school year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. The next will be taken as a group. Pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, I make a recommendation for Amy Allen, Angie Booker, Amanda Gillan, Cassidy Graham, Tiffany Heard, Raymond Mull, Grayson Stuppfield, all for professional staff, all for school year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Same.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next group, I'd like to make a recommendation pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements for Jennifer Barnes, Ashley Curtis, Kristen Hunt, Jessica Middleton, Hannah White, Heather Young, all peer professionals, all for the school year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Third. Second.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, recommendations will be for substitute employees and they'll all be pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. First two I'd like to take together is Tommy Cattlehand and Stacy Gilbreath, both substitute teachers, both for the school year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is for a recommendation pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, Daniel Morgan, substitute clerical, effective five twelve twenty twenty-three.
A motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is Tracy Summers, substitute clerical, pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements for school year twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four.
May I have a motion?
You have a motion.
And a second?
Same.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next two will be taken together is Lisa Tatum and Amy Thum, both substitute nutrition, both effective five twelve twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is for Luke R. Pelfrey for substitute mechanic, effective six one twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, vote as unanimous.
Excellent. Next one is for Ms. Madison Conant, substitute office staff, effective six one twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Same.
All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next names are transfers and they're for informational purposes only. It will be Ms. Michelle Davis, professional staff to the Fannie County High School. Daniel Seth Davis, professional staff to the Fannie County High School. Hallie Lad, professional staff, internal transfer inside of Westfannin Elementary School. Nicole Board, professional staff, internal transfer to a different position into the Fannie County High School. Lisa Jarrett, paraprofessional, Blue Ridge Elementary. Next, I'd like to make recommendations for summer custodial workers. These will be effective June first through July twenty-first twenty twenty-three. And that would be Colin Bruce, Jonah Couch, Dakota Harris, and Robert Washington.
Do I hear a motion?
Do you have a motion?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that completes our personnel list. And with that, we have superintendent comments. And this month, we celebrate a teacher appreciation week. A teacher can be described as a person who helps students to acquire knowledge, competence, or virtue. By that definition, I would like to recognize each employee of the Fannie County School System as a teacher, regardless of what your name badge says. In one week and one day from now, the class of twenty twenty-three will walk across the field to receive their diploma. A diploma that is the result of the collective work of the students, their families, and each employee of the Fannie County School System, all of which is supported by our Fannie County Board of Education. We are blessed to have been a part of these students' journey. I want to congratulate the students who are recognized here tonight. I am proud of all of our students. We are a community that has the opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of Fannie County students in all areas, whether academic, athletic, or civic. The future is bright. We are Fannie. And Mr. Chair, with that said, I'd like for the Asoc. Ramsey to give us an update on some of our students, please, sir.
I would love to give you an update on some of our students. We have been sitting here tonight. We have earned yet another state championship with Corbin Davenport, with the state champion in pole vault. That might be a particular interest in some city up there. And in addition to that, we have the state runner-up in pole vault, Tyler Stevenson. So we took the top two spots in pole vault and that's against a lot of private schools. We'd be Edric Captain's Academy down there, so we're pretty fired up about that. We also had our four-by-eight girls relay finish state runner-up. So very proud of them. And that is made up of Holloway girls. We know who they are, that is Lindsey Holloway and Cardi Holloway, and then Ava Acker and Carli Sams. So extremely proud of what's going on right there, and we're not finished yet. So I just want to make, give y'all an update and let you know that we are, we're doing some damage down there in the state level, so very proud. I guess that goes back to my ability to hire good coaches. I don't know about to take credit for that. But I really appreciate Mr. Holloway and y'all he does, and Mr. Ruth. And Mr. Ruth's going to carry out here as soon as the fourth year is over and heading down. I bring that far, his presentation was a little shorter tonight. Yeah, he needs to get down the road and, your coach is already down there. So just very proud of our coaches and the work they've done and obviously the work that our athletes have put in. Just really excited and really proud of how our crap program has been built up. Just wanted to make you aware of that and congratulate our athletes and coaches.
Thank you, Dr. Ramsey. I see a lot of fist bumpers up here, I think they can get some applause. What do you think? With that said, Mr. Chair, score member comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Holloway.
First, I want to say, great job, Dr. Ruth. After Ruth, sorry, she didn't give a few good things, good job. Great presentation, the ninety-eight point six is nothing to be ashamed of. I'm very proud of that. Mr. Young, great presentation, enjoyed that. And we were short a brief here, but I want to definitely say a good shout-out to Corbin and Tyler Stevenson, Corbin Davenport and Tyler. It's been an honor to watch the boys be a part of that, but they, they aren't ever better than that on their own. It's just a blessing to be a part of it, be exciting to watch, and that's amazing. Especially for our girls, too, which is saying, that's amazing for me. I'm very super proud of them. Mr. Vision, I want to thank you for coming tonight with your comments to us. And last fall into this, and I mentioned last month, I would ask the children to sit over here with my mother and father.
Just come right on down the line.
Well, first, I'd like to redefine, Ms. Miller's coffee. I think the word educator needs to be redefined to include all of them, because she included. If you're aiding and abetting in the process of giving a kid a new life, whether you're a custodian or bus driver or whatever, I say as a boy to you, you're as important in their life. Maybe not as the teacher, but you are very important. The next time I'd like, this comment, I'd like to paint you a picture of a kid that goes through Fannie County School System and takes advantage and has all those opportunities. Never goes to college, never goes to a trade school, walks out the door as a graduate, and opens a business or cuts timber for a living or hires on at a factory and spends the rest of their life working eight hours. All those programs, just imagine how different their lives are because of all those opportunities. A married, single, a married mom would have all that to, health issues. Animals, opportunities with hands-on, everything from farming to healthcare to animal care to, you name it. That kid, even if they don't, her father-in-law, as we describe it, their life has been impacted and changed and blessed in something that I did not have as a, as a student graduate. And I appreciate what I did receive, but our kids are so blessed this day. And teachers just, y'all just keep making it better and better. So thank y'all. Thank you educators, thank you people who changed the world, who changed kids' lives and gave them the hope to live a different life than potentially they didn't have. So with that, I would be quiet.
I've said it before and I'll tell you again. I just don't have the words to express our children. All our children came in tonight who done extremely well. And as Mr. Ramsey pointed out, just had two more to do extremely well. We have got some great children in Fannie County. And we have, I won't say it's the best, but we have one of the best schools in Georgia. Four hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen meals. I wonder how long it can take all the restaurants in Blue Ridge to do that many meals? They couldn't do it in one year. Martha, like Mr. Bramley said, you're an asset to this school. You're an asset to our children because you care. Mr. Ruth, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. I know what carpentry is, okay? What's fine furniture? Is that where you make something like a chair or table or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You have to, you have to get the fine detail of the furniture.
It's not just a rough board, it's... Okay.
Honestly, they all broke together in the same teacher.
You know, I'm with Mr. Dewey's. I had basically the same thing when he went through school. I was, I was privileged to have that. But for us to allow our children to have multiple things to do, that's just, that's just me. I love it to death. I appreciate everybody being here tonight and look for you next week, I mean, next month. Mr. Pope?
Yeah, I'm in awe about a STEM program. Everybody knows I'm part of that CTAE. I want, I want that avenue available for our kids, but it starts much earlier. And Dr. Ruth, you pointed that out, even in those kids doing robots. And since it is special recognitions we had here, Ms. Althea, you did an awesome job. While I visited with you in your classroom, talking to me about trout. I fished all these rivers and creeks as a kid, all around this area, and you explained to me in fifteen minutes something I had no clue about. I know how to catch them, but I don't know how to take care of them. And you're doing that to our kids and that's awesome. You know, I wish I had more time to fish these days, but, but what you and Tori do, my little girl just loves it. Okay? That's just one I know of. So I know they're excited to, to... So I know they're excited to work with you, and I want to thank you for what you're doing. Just awesome. And I want to thank Thomas, who's hit around the corner there, who is our armed guard, taking care of us. Thank you, sir, for being here. And just, just awesome to wrap up this year, all the way from the work orders in the maintenance department. I spoke with him since the last meeting, and just, just talking about that, because my, my job is sell hours. I sell time working on cars. That's, each job is given a value, and so that's how we come up with what it, what it costs to get your car fixed. And so, we sell hours, we sell time. And to see those amount of hours that your guys are putting in, one of them could be fifteen minutes, one of them could be three days, you know? So when you're looking at those work, work orders, man, our guys are doing their job, and, you know, they're not here for me to, to say that to them, so I'm saying it to you. I thank you for the, for the job that you're doing, it's just, just awesome. And, Mr. Bishop, thank you. We are doing our best to secure our kids, and because we love them. I have one in there. I want her protected, I want her secure. And so, thank y'all for coming tonight, loving each and every one of you. Have a blessed night.
Teacher Appreciation Week. I do not have adequate words to describe my appreciation for what all of you do for our students in Fannin County. It's extremely gratifying to get to be a part of the program, and I suppose the ultimate gratification for all of us is the success of our students, and we saw such wonderful examples here tonight. They're doing remarkably well. The young lady, Ms. Melia Cochran, who was one of the twenty-eight female welders to be recognized nationally, was my teacher. I came over and spent a couple of hours. I've been stick welding for years, just basic welding, but I wanted to learn more about the new advanced equipment. And she spent two hours with me explaining this, she was very patient, and very engaging, and it was just a wonderful Saturday morning I got to spend with her. And again, extremely gratifying to see students succeed. It's interesting what you remember about school. On the way to the meeting tonight, we got behind bus thirty-seven. Bus thirty-seven was making a left turn onto Highway five-fifteen on Highway sixty, a two-lane highway, turned left onto a four-lane highway. And he executed the turn perfectly. When I was in high school, if you took driver's ed, you could get a discount on the automobile insurance, so I took it. I'd been driving for years, I grew up on farm. I missed one question the entire course, and it was that exact turn onto a four-lane highway. Which lane do you enter when turning left onto a four-lane highway? Well, the correct answer is you enter the inside lane, then you put your turn, your right turn signal on, and merge over into the right-hand lane. And I was so distressed because the teacher would not change that, and went by the State Patrol Office and asked them, and they said, "You're absolutely right, he is wrong." And he still refused to change the one missed question. Bus number thirty-seven did a great job. Thank you to all of you for what you do for our kids, for keeping them safe. Our security officers at every school are willing to put their lives on the line for the safety of our children. And many of the security measures that are in place, we won't talk about in public. But we appreciate your concern, and we do share it. Thanks for all of the public comment tonight, we appreciate your concerns, and we appreciate you bringing items to our attention. Thank you, Superintendent Miller.
Yes.
She is doing an exceptional job, and we're very, very pleased to have her as our superintendent. We're looking forward to great things in the future. That's all I have, thank you all very much. Drive safely, and hopefully we'll see you again next month. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Same.
And all those in favor? Good night, everyone.